Candidate forum for the city council. Before we start, I want to say a few words about... We're certainly grateful for everyone that came and grateful for all of you that came. What we'll do in the beginning is ask each of the candidates to say a few words about themselves, about why they're here, what they do, and then we'll take a question from the audience. If you raise your hand, I have this microphone available for you. And we ask that you please use the microphone because many of us have hearing issues and are unable to hear as we use the big speakers here. And this is really not the best way to hold the microphone. You'll be heard and all your questions will be answered. And I guess, is there anything else? I forgot. I think not. So let's start with Yuna and we'll go right down the line.
It's working. Testing, one, two, three. Okay, this is the part where I talk a little bit about myself. And so I wasn't given a time limit and that can be a problem for me. I'm a big talker. Half Irish, we've got the gift of the gab. But in any case, I've been on the city council now for four years. I was first actually elected four years ago. I was originally appointed to my seat when my husband, who was on the city council, passed away. He was a former mayor, Michael Kies. So it's really been a great learning experience and a real honor to be on the city council for the past four years. I've learned a tremendous amount. Just as far as my background, I've lived in Sonoma County since 1971. That makes me kind of ancient, too. I have lived in Sebastopol constantly since 1989, but a couple of times on and off prior to that. My husband and I had an accounting software company for about 35 years. I was in the technology business. I know quite a bit about accounting and finance, which I found to be very useful on the city council. I also was the executive director of Coast Walk California, which is a nonprofit organization statewide. There is also a former executive director in the audience as well. And he's perked up now. And I now make my living as a consultant to nonprofit organizations, primarily in management and finance. I majored in political science at Sonoma State University, where I was a classmate of some former supervisors, et cetera. I also worked at the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors. I was an aide to former supervisor Michael Riley. And so I've had quite a bit of experience in government. I've had quite a bit of experience in business and quite a bit of experience in nonprofits. And I think that that broad experience has really been very helpful to me on the city council. Since being on the city council, I feel I've worked towards what is the tagline in my campaign, which is, "I am for a healthy, prosperous, and inclusive small town that is respectful of people and the planet." So I have worked hard to bring people together. That doesn't mean I always agree with people. But when I don't agree with them, I try to persuade people about my ideas and respectfully disagree when I can't agree. So I am hoping that people in the audience here will honor me with their vote in this election season. And I feel that our council has really been very productive over the past many years, actually, in making Sebastopol a beacon for small-town green and progressive values.
Hello. That's fine. I'm Vaughn. I'm 22 years old. I own my own electronics repair business. We... I repair computers, smartphones, just about anything, turntables. And I'm a volunteer firefighter. I want to run for Sebastopol City Council because we... The younger generation will be inheriting this city and I believe that right now is a good time to learn from the current council what I can so I can bring that on to the future, bring Sebastopol to the future. I graduated Amely High School in 2014. And since then, I have run my own electronics repair business. That pretty much sums it up. Off the top of my head.
You are much briefer than you know. Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Ernie. Thank you for coming today. Especially thank you to Burbank Heights and Orchards for having this forum. It's always nice to be here just because of the dignity and respect you offer to us for these sorts of activities. And I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I moved here 40 years ago with my husband, Dan Ernie. Habits to be here, Dan. There he is. And we were sort of squeezed out of Palo Alto. And this was the time before Silicon Valley and Google were even in our vocabulary. As young people, we wanted to pursue the American dream and have a family. We researched and found that Sonoma County was growing and for a newly credentialed teacher, that meant Dan could be employed. I moved up here with the postal service and worked as a walking letter carrier, became a postmaster, went on to law school, worked in Santa Rosa, two different law firms, became a partner in a law firm downtown Santa Rosa, and moved my law practice over to Sebastopol. The first time in 2006 that I was honored to be the mayor. It was really important to me to live and work in the same town so that I could see what this place is like 24 hours a day, all through those daytimes, Monday through Friday as well. So I'm running because I enjoy the work very much. I enjoy working with my colleagues. I enjoy a very professional city staff. It's kind of fun to push them once in a while, see what more we might get from them. The work is very much in line with my professional background as an attorney and as an attorney who went full-time into mediation. So I'm here to look at issues, make sure we dial in the issue, we understand the emotions that often drive that issue. And my responsibility that I take most highly is to make decisions, policy decisions, from our community values, protective of our small-town character in our environment. It's been my pleasure to be a member of the council for 14 years now. And what I've recognized from that history is Sebastopol is very much a progressive leader in Sonoma County. Just a fun example of that that I hope you will relate to. We have the first free shovel bus in Sonoma County. And who followed us? You all, you're the best. So you just have to know, we're the pilot program for a lot of things. In that case, Hillsburg followed us, Windsor followed us, and Cloverdale is on board as well. And because of that success, the bus company wants to expand that sort of service. We have other firsts. We're the first with the living wage ordinance, urban growth boundary. We're the startup community for the Laguna Foundation. I would like to be a continuing part of that progressive movement in Sonoma County. So I hope you would honor me with your vote.
This one's ours to share, sir.
Oh, thank you.
There are a couple of other firsts that the Sebastopol City Council... I'll... Not that I want to finish Sarah's statement, but we were also the first to have a photovoltaic ordinance. And we were also the first community to ban in city landscapes and gardens and parks the use of glyphosate, in other words, Roundup. And other communities, we see now 15 years old in the town. They're just now starting to move that direction. So that's how far ahead of that issue we were. So I too would like to thank the organizers of this forum. It's always nice to come up here and to be here on a Wednesday afternoon instead of a Wednesday morning for the market. Both are fine. So it's a great time to learn about the four candidates and to hear our styles. We're all very individualistic, I'm sure. So as you all know, my name is Patrick Slater and I've been honored to serve as an elected representative in the city of Sebastopol for the past almost eight years. Prior to my election in 2010, I served about three or three-and-a-half years on the Sebastopol Planning Commission as a city council appointee. We'll talk about quite a few specific topics today. So rather than delve into any of those right now, I'll just introduce myself a little bit. I've lived in Sebastopol for almost 22 years. My wife, Teresa, and I purchased and restored a 1906 house right here in downtown. This is my neighborhood. I'm not more than two stone's throws away from Burbank Heights. We don't have any kids, but we do share our lives with two dogs and two cats. And you often will find me walking out of the farm with one or both of the dogs. It's a common route for me. I'm a self-employed architect. I'm a sole practitioner. I work for myself. I don't have any employees. And many of my projects are in Sebastopol. But right now, most of my work is focused on helping folks rebuild their homes, mostly in the Coffee Park area, but also Mark West. And personally, I have a lot of projects in Tom and Grove, but largely in Coffee Park. In town, a couple of my more notable designs that people seem to be the most familiar with. The first is the building that houses the restaurant Eight up Hillsburg Avenue. And then another one that people really use as a landmark is the rich golden rock-colored building at the intersection of Petaluma and Bodega Avenue. It's the three-story office building right in downtown. I've found that my experience with building design and planning, city planning, has been really invaluable on the city council. From time to time, a project will get appealed to the city council. And I see it as a chance to both educate my coworkers and lead on issues that are important to the community, to listen to the community members about what is important. And we've had some really big successes with some of those appeals. We've made a lot of projects significantly better through that process. And it's a public process that just works. It works really well. But my experience has shown that it's important to have somebody on the city council with that type of work and life experience. So my colleagues on the council, as well as with city staff who are utterly professional and completely invaluable, we've worked really hard on making Sebastopol greener, more economically stable, more physically inviting and attractive, and working towards Sebastopol really being the place that we all really want it to be, not what outside influences are telling us that they want it to be. I'm excited about being able to continue to apply my experience in both private and public realms, using my common sense, consensus-building, decision-making, and to keep working for the residents of Sebastopol. It's really been quite an honor to do this work and I thank you very much.
Do we have some questions from this side of the room? Anyone? Laura Lee.
This is sort of a generic question. Yesterday, Sage, this guy here, called me and we started talking and we really didn't know what power the city council has versus Mary or Larry, all the other guys. So I don't know if that's really a question for this, but I think a Sebastopol 101 class might be really helpful to know who really makes the decisions about different things. So, you know, we really didn't know, so...
Anyone? Well, should I start? So the intro of the syllabus to Sebastopol 101, if you will, is that the city council, as the elected officials, form the policy. They make the rules. The city council decides on financial issues. It decides on ordinance issues, all manner of decisions that need to be made. The staff is empowered to carry out those wishes. The staff cannot make any decisions of policy by themselves. It's the way that the city structure works is that you've got the residents. They're up here at the top. And the residents vote for the city council. And then the city council has two employees. We have the city manager slash city attorney and the assistant city manager slash city clerk. And from there, all the other city employees work for those two people. So the fire chief, the police chief, the public works superintendent, the building official, the finance director, and all of their line staff are hired and managed by the city manager and the assistant city manager. I'll stop there. I could keep going, but I'll...
Well, this is fun because we explain this to our visitors from Tokyo City every time they come because our government is very different from theirs. They don't understand this concept of city and county because they only have cities. So we have to offer them, maybe it's a pre-101 because they're seventh, eighth, and ninth graders. So I just explain it simply as Patrick has gone into more detail. The council members are decision-makers about policy. So that's what we do. Our responsibility is to, I think, adhere to the community values and bring those forward in our policies. A good example, the no pets decydation or herbicide use. That was an environmental protection that our community really wanted and we implemented that on our city property. We ask that our community do that voluntarily. On the other hand, we have city staff. And those people are the service deliverers. They're the folks that make sure this municipality functions 24/7 and provides for you as residents the services you need. Most people are familiar with police, fire. Public Works is another one. Those guys are like the heroes out on the street, really. Building, planning, and so on. So our city manager, who is also our city attorney, is the head of all that. He directs the staff, as Patrick said, according to the policies that we determine. And we have to acknowledge our assistant city manager, Mary Gorley, because she's the person, I say, is kind of there at command central, who knows everything, knows what's going on. And she's the person many of us prefer, many of you too, to say, "You want an answer? Call Mary." The fortunate thing about our city as a small community, I think each of you is maybe one person away from the answer that you need. You can ask us. We direct you to staff. You can ask Mary. You'll get directed to the appropriate department. And that, I think, is a wonderful feeling for a resident of empowerment. You actually can function in your city, in your city government, to have it work for you in both ways, in terms of service delivery, in terms of connecting with your council members. I think each of us is accessible, accountable, responsible, responsive. And we try to be as available as we can to either direct your questions or discuss potential policies with you.
Well, they kind of summed it up. But to answer the question, I believe, yes, the city should make a document that's easy to read, that explains an overview of what each department does in the city. And that includes the city council. That's... That would be something that I would look forward to if elected, to see that through.
Well, my colleagues have all done a great job in talking about what the city council does versus staff. I don't think anybody actually said that the city council hires two people amongst our staff. Did Patrick say that? Okay, Patrick said that. I wasn't listening. To reiterate, just emphasize.
What else is there?
So they hire... Actually, if we had a separate city manager, it'd be three people. But we hire, as a city council, we hire our city manager, our city attorney, and our city clerk. And they are responsible, and our city manager is responsible, for hiring the rest of the staff. So basically, we set policy and we pass it on to our city manager and the management, and then it's implemented. I also wanted to say a little bit about constraints. One of the things that you find out and becomes more and more clear the longer you're on the council is that there are constraints about what we can do as a city council. For example, we're a very small city. Our budget is quite small. It's about $8.5 million, which for, when you think of a city of over 7,000 people, that's really not all that much money. And so we have people say to us sometimes, "Well, why don't you raise money by doing this?" Or change that, or whatever. Well, the state actually sets a lot of constraints on what we can do. The state tells us, basically, we have two or three options for raising revenues for our city. And we can't decide all of a sudden that we're going to have a too many tires-on-your-car tax or something silly like that. The state defines an awful lot of what we can do and defines what our jurisdiction is. So we have control over the operations of the city, but we don't have any influence on, for example, education. There's so many other jurisdictions that overlap with our city. That so, for example, there's a water quality control board. There's the Air District. There's the ABAG, which is the Association of Bay Area Governments. All of these different agencies dictate what our constraints are and set a lot of rules about what we can do. So we are the city council. We have jurisdiction over setting policy in our city. But it's policy about what the state of California says we're allowed to set policy about.
Thank you. Very much. So I guess we all really see the city council putting on a bake sale. No, that's not... We have answers over here. Anyone?
This is Devon. Hi, Vaughn. First of all, I say I'm really happy to see somebody your age putting their time into this. We really think you are... And I hope you're getting everybody of your age voting this in.
Yes.
What are you doing about that?
That is a good question. Most of the people that I know are around my age do not live here in town. They live in various parts of the county, Santa Rosa, Petaluma. But for the ones here in town, I haven't really marketed towards them yet. I do have a Facebook page and I am on there quite a bit recently. And I believe that to reach the younger population, that I need to use social media and other various platforms to reach out to them. But I haven't reached out as much as I should have. And I will work on that as soon as we are done here.
Sage, can I just comment on that? Is that a comment or a rumble? What I like to do to reach out to voters is to go door-to-door. That is the fun part of campaigning for me because I get to see the approach to the house, the road pavement condition, the sidewalk, the front yard is a convert to water-saving character of the house. And when someone is home and I am fortunate to talk to them, I get to hear them share their experience of this town. And believe me, from neighborhood to neighborhood, it's really, really different. And I'm making a special effort to find the little houses behind houses and the small units where I believe more of our young people could be living, given the housing crisis here. So it's important to me to connect with folks in that way.
More questions? Denise?
Well, my question is along the same vein. I've been concerned about the inability to go forward living here and the younger generation having to leave because they can't afford to live here. And I'm wondering if there's any kind of a plan, any approach that you have thought about or planned about for long term for the next generation to be able to actually live in this town?
I'll start. That is, without a doubt, in my estimation, the number-one issue for the entire region. Even well beyond Sonoma County, if you look at the entire Bay Area, that is the number-one issue. I just recently saw an article that San Francisco has the highest housing cost, I think it was in the world. I mean, it's just astronomically expensive to live here. And, see, head shaking. Either way, it's directly expensive. And the cost of housing and also the cost of the construction of housing is really astronomical. I see that in my day job with the rebuilds up in Coffee Park, which are largely very modest, single-family homes. And when some, a couple has owned their home for 35 years and they have completed that what we think of as the American dream. They've worked hard all their lives. They paid their house off and now they're in retirement. So they purchased a home. They end up underinsured because of the cost of construction. I... Those modest little homes are coming in at $400, $500 a square foot average cost of construction. And that is turning into, you know, a $600,000, three-bedroom, two-bath home. It's really expensive to construct these days. And that in and of itself is a really big problem. But then you couple that with the construction or the availability of land. And middle-income and lower-housing advocates and developers have told us that it is virtually impossible to construct housing, workforce housing, senior housing, even if the land is free, without additional subsidies. So it's an enormous problem that the city council is attempting to address, largely in work that we're doing right now, which is with the update to the zoning ordinance. We went through a general plan update process a couple of years ago. That is done. And that is the guiding principle. That's the dreams. Those are the aspirations of our community. The zoning ordinance is where it's codified, is turned into law, into policies that will help us reach the goals that we dream of in the general plan. We have allowances for greater densities. We have allowances for second units. We have allowances for third units. And there are a lot of things in there that can be done to densify our existing town, which leads to smaller units, which are therefore more affordable, I won't say affordable, more affordable by design. And like so many others, I feel lucky that, I sometimes joke with people, that I, my wife and I purchased a second-to-last good deal in town. And it was a big fixture-upper. There aren't that many fixture-uppers anymore. We have probably thousands of hours of sweat equity at the place. And those kinds of houses just don't really exist in town anymore. So we've got a couple of proposals for smaller, more affordable units in maybe the $400,000 to $500,000 range, which is still a lot of money. But when was the last time a house sold for that kind of money in Sebastopol? It's relative. So the inability for folks to afford to live here is, for me, the number-one issue that we need to try to work on.
I want to express my appreciation to our housing subcommittee. That was Patrick and Yuna, who worked through Yuna's year as the mayor to come forward with some innovations about housing for us. The process now is to densify. I think what we're working off of is a traditional or old-fashioned definition of what family is, single-family dwelling. One family per home isn't working so well. When we have four- or five-bedroom homes and empty nester parents or a single person living there. We have big properties with only one house on them. We have small properties that have potential extra units squeezed in. We also have a number of illegal units. You know, garage conversions, those things. When I walk door-to-door, I see, I think our notion there is that we're going to provide space as we can for more people and hopefully young people. And I'm not sure that it's going to work as we densify that way. So I would like Yuna to mention the housing forum is coming up.
Oh, you got your mic. Don't have to share this one. So we have a housing forum for...
So, we have a housing forum coming up that the Sebastopol Housing Subcommittee is putting on. It will be at the Community Center. And it will be an informational forum that will, has a number of goals. First of all, it's to inform people that already own homes in Sebastopol about the opportunities that they have to help with our housing crisis. So, it's going to be explaining the whole idea of ADUs, which is a new slick term for granny units. And it's explaining, there's going to be a lot of informational sessions about how someone, as a homeowner, can build an ADU on their property. So, how they can build a granny unit and actually add to our housing stock. One of the other things that we now have, aside from building a granny unit, is we also allow people to turn part of their existing home into a granny unit. So, you're not actually building a whole new unit. You're just turning a part of your house into an additional unit. Essentially, you're turning your home into a duplex. And that can be done for very low cost, because the zoning and building codes regarding that have been changed significantly to make it much more affordable for existing homeowners to basically carve a little part of their house out, put an external entrance, add a little kitchen, and call it a second unit. So, we're going to be providing informational sessions to the public to explain to them how this can, what the rules are, how this can be done. We're going to be inviting some banks to help people who are interested in investing in that to participate. We'll also be having information at the housing forum that's going to be directed at builders to invite them to build moderate-income housing in our jurisdiction and how we are making that more viable, how we're facilitating that in our town. And more information about the zoning laws, where we're allowing smaller units on smaller lots. Some of the other things that we talked about and that we'll be, we talked about in our housing subcommittee over the last year. And we're also going to be informing the public about at our housing forum, which is November third, fourth, thank you. November fourth, we'll be talking about our Share Sebastopol program. So, the city council has funded something called Share Sebastopol. They are doing intake at the Sebastopol Senior Center twice a month. And Share Sebastopol is about pairing, in particular, seniors who have too much housing with seniors who don't have any housing. And there is a social worker who is working on that program. Basically, it's a roommate-matching service for seniors. And what she does is she looks for people that are compatible and tries to find, you know, is that person into rock and roll at midnight? Well, no, they're not going to be a very good roommate for that person. But that person loves rock and roll. So, that's what that program does and where the city is funding that to try and fill up some of our houses. I am a widow. My house is big. My daughter is gone a lot of the time. She's actually off in Nevada, trying to elect a Democrat to the Senate there right now. Putting a little plug in there, but I have roommates. And so, I, you know, I'm the ripe old age of, I'm not even going to say how old I am. I have gotten roommates. And so, now I have three adults living in my house, plus my daughter, who is also twenty-four. And we're trying to encourage that kind of home-sharing, because we have a lot of empty nesters in this town who are living in four- or five-bedroom houses, living by themselves. And if they can either find an appropriate kind of roommate or create an ADU, then we're going to have a lot more housing in our town. I just also need to say, you know, we are working on this. We're working on finding funding. Patrick and I were just at the California League of Cities Convention about a week ago. And we were learning about the kinds of financing that's available for affordable housing. One of the things many people don't realize is that our city actually has, I think our percentage of renters in our town is about forty-seven percent. And why is that when we're so expensive? Well, that's because our city council invested in putting its, quote, "redevelopment money" from the state into building affordable housing instead of creating new shopping malls or something like that. So, that big affordable housing project that's over by Palm Drive Hospital, that was partially paid for by our city in partnership with other locations, but that came from our city's money. And the reason why we do have a lot of renters in this town is that we have put a lot of money into what's called subsidized housing that is still affordable to average people. Unfortunately, the state cut off that money. So, that money's no more, no longer available. But we're still working on finding more of those kinds of funds. And we're continuing to work on these ADUs and getting some developers in to build some lower-income apartment buildings. So, I could go on and on about housing, but I just have to say one more thing. And this is, I think, really a model for our entire county. It's Park Village. And I think I've had Supervisor Hopkins has said to me, "You all have really set the bar. You've done something really innovative that no other city has done." And we took an older trailer park that we owned. And rather than let it just kind of go away through attrition, the city has invested in that and upgraded it, fixed it up. And it was less than half-full, considerably less than half-full. We partnered with West County Community Services, and we've made it a priority to house people who are actually homeless in that facility. And we now, it's completely full. We've got donated trailers, all kinds of donated building materials, plus the work of West County Community Services, which has an in-house social worker manager to help those people that are living there who have issues with transitioning from being homeless into having a home. So, we are being proactive on a lot of these housing issues.
So, about long-term affordable housing. I see the, now, I hope one of the council's current incumbents corrects me if I'm wrong here. But to have an incentive program to build the granny, you know, ADUs, or granny units is most people call them. Create a better program if there isn't already one established. Also, I looked up about six months ago and I saw that a cost, just for the permits, around ten thousand dollars to build an ADU. And I believe that if, it is, for most, I'm going to just generalize. For most people, ten thousand dollars is a good chunk of change. So, if there was a way to pay that to the city, but over the course of, let's say, ten years through their water bill, that would be a program that I think a lot of people would jump onto. But this is just for the permits. We're not talking about actual building costs. I can see the city having a program like that for the future.
And I wanted to ask you, what have you sensed about the general community response to these innovative ideas? As a generally positive, especially in the business community? What do you feel about that?
The process that went, that the city went through for the general plan update, we had, I believe the committee was close to twenty people. On the actual committee, was it fifty? Maybe fifty to twenty people. And so, those were the people who did the hardest, the largest amount of work on that process. The meetings were very well attended by members of the community. So, it wasn't just those limited voices having input to that. So, we had representatives from the business community, from the Chamber of Commerce. Their membership was well-represented, Downtown Association. And so, all of those voices were heard during that process. And so, my sense is that it's, it has a large amount of community support for the policies, including densification. So, that's what I would say.
And the general plan is available online, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
At the county, at the city website?
City website. So, I want to add to what Patrick said about our general plan process. In addition to the Citizens Committee drafting the general plan, in 2016, the council went through meeting after meeting, public meetings. And there might have been like fifteen of those as well, as we vetted with the public ourselves, each chapter and section and chapter of the general plan. So, we have a document, I think, that is very much community-sourced. I want to speak to the question that I heard, which is, "What is the community's response to these changes in housing?" And what I'm hearing out on the street is significant. As neighborhoods are experiencing new building projects, these small granny units in the back, or houses that are divided with a tenant upstairs. Now, we're seeing cars with each of those projects, and there is not a parking requirement off-street. So, what we're finding on our residential streets is a new conflict over who parks where. As in a small town, I think there's kind of an unwritten law. You get to park in front of your own house. Nobody else parks there. So, I'm seeing a lot of self-help measures out there in the streets, especially the older ones in town, where people are putting garbage cans out to reserve their parking spot, or cones. One person, I'm assuming was a young woman because the chalk was pink. She lined up her space and said, "Suzie's parking place, stay out," you know? So, I'm seeing that there are pressures that come with the densification that we're talking about. And we have to be aware. There may be consequences we didn't intend, and they're going to surface on us. And those are some that I'm hearing right now.
The other question back here.
And one final note on what Sarah said about the parking requirements. That was something that the state law changed. So, the city of Sebastopol does not have any jurisdiction over parking requirements for accessory dwelling units. So, that's out of our hands. We can't do anything about that.
And I suppose you want to be a good neighbor and build a parking place.
I just wanted to say one more thing about the issue of the lack of housing or the lack of affordable housing. And this is not a simple problem. It's complicated. And one of the causes of our lack of affordable housing is that, which I actually thought Bonn's idea is good, the idea of stretching out permit, paying for permits. However, we're struggling with this issue in our zoning ordinance right now. Is if we make allowances so that people can build things less expensively by cutting our permit costs, then how do we know that the person who builds the housing isn't going to gouge the public? So, are they going to build this really cute little ADU, but, oh, by the way, they're going to charge three thousand dollars a month for it? And this is one of the issues that's causing the rise of housing costs, is that we're getting people that are renting houses for the weekend, or we're even finding people that are buying houses, buying houses as their second or third home. And they're not even renting it out. So, they're taking some of our housing stock out of circulation because they can afford two or three houses. So, you know, these kinds of problems are, and how we can deal with them as a small jurisdiction are complicated, because there's limits to what we can do to regulate that. So, I, one of the things I say about affordable housing is also we have a lack of affordable housing, but part of what we also have is a lack of affordable jobs. And so, we have people that are down in San Francisco and in the Silicon Valley can make enormous amounts of money. And people that live here do not make as much money, but yet, we're competing with them for housing. So, these are going to take some regional solutions to these kind of problems, because we can't only fix it here in Sebastopol. A lot of this is working with our colleagues in the other, you know, the nine cities in Sonoma County and working with the county and working with North Bay governments to try and figure out solutions to these problems, because it is complicated.
Ms. Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Gerber, may I ask this question? I'm changing the subject a bit. You mentioned the community values. Could you articulate it a little more? What's your view of the praise?
Well, thank you for asking me first. Probably each of us would want to speak about that. As relates to government, I think our community values are of transparency, accountability, responsibility, responsiveness, sustainability. I mean, there's a long list. As for our community values, I see a community that has great interest in diversity. That diversity is really one of thought and opinion. And we see a lot of people who become informed and then become activists in our government. I also think we're a compassionate community. Now, we care quite a lot about each other and about those people who are not doing so well here. I think, too, we are a modest or humble community. When we look at the statistics from the Economic Development Board, I think in 2016, we had the lowest median income of all the small cities. And on top of that, we had the next highest housing prices and the highest SAT scores, which indicated to me, what does our community value, sir? Well, let's see, we're not greedy people. We don't have a lot of money. Money isn't the big driver here as much. We're interested in getting by in a modest way. Education is really important, okay? We value information, education, research, thinking, deliberating, all those activities. And as to housing crisis, we are being victimized by the market, because we're such a great community because of our values, that a lot of people want to live here or invest here. I also think there's a strong sense of belonging that we share. People who live here really feel attached and founded here, grounded here, and really enjoy being here. As I go door-to-door, I hear this repeatedly. I love living here. I'm a fourth generation. I moved away, I came back. I could have lived anywhere in the world, and I chose this place. And it's something about this place. People come and it feels like home. And it's that sense of feeling like home that each of us determines in our own values, that I've tried to kind of generalize in a way, I think, to answer your question. Other takers on that?
The humanity of this community is, you don't have to go very far to find that. It's in the baskets on people's front curves with extra vegetables that they grew in their yard. It's the proliferation of the small libraries, the tiny, what are they called? Very small, little free libraries, that's the term. It seems like a new one of those I see popped up weekly around town. And you see people using them and sharing books and sharing ideas through those things. The creativity of this town, it's the ability to join in when a project is put before us. And I keep going back to the general plan as an example. But that, that's, we had more applicants for that general plan update committee than we knew what to do with. And that's really unusual. The ability for this community to join in and participate is heartening and incredibly humanistic.
You saw that response at the fire the morning after.
That's what I was just going to talk about.
Take it, you know.
So, I was mayor during the fires. And so, that day started for me at about three-ten in the morning, with the city manager calling me and saying, "I don't know if you know this yet." And of course, I was pretty sleepy. Of course, I was pretty sleepy, but, you know, half the county's burning down. And so, from then on, I got updates, and I knew our entire fire department was over there helping everybody in Santa Rosa. And by seven o'clock in the morning, I actually had talked with Sarah about going to the shelters. So, we had already determined by that time in the morning, we were going to open emergency shelters for our friends and neighbors over in Santa Rosa and elsewhere in the county. And we were down there working at the shelters, checking people and trying to find housing for people by 7:30 that morning. And that, pretty much, I spent the next three months, that was what I dealt with, the impact of the fires. But what was interesting about it was the response of our community. We had, I think it was the offer during that time, so that the person that runs Share Sebastopol was actually writing something called Share Fire. And it was to find housing for people whose houses had burned down. We had about 850 volunteers offering to open up their home for people to stay with them because their house had burned down. I mean, that's the kind of community we are. And the person who's running that program actually lives in Petaluma, but she said by far, you know, the number of offers, a large number of the offers came from West County and from Sebastopol. So, I just think, you know, our county is, we're out there on a day-to-day basis, the kind of people that open up their homes to help people they don't even know. So, I think that's really pretty cool. Otherwise, in terms of, another thing that our city has done, I think that says something about our community values, is we were just at a dedication of the Peacetime Wall a weekend, a week ago. And so, the idea behind that was, and that was started by Michael Gelati and Richard Ritecki, two good retired people in our community. And the idea behind that is, a lot of cities have monuments to people who make war, but very few who have actively engaged in trying to create peace. And... So, we, as a city, actually put on our public property a wall that, it's over by the Rialto Theater. And every four years, or every year, we get four more names of people who have been active and that we want to acknowledge as peacemakers in the world. And this year was kind of an amazing year because we had four people added to that wall. But two of them are actually really famous, and I don't want to take away from our wonderful local people, but we did have both Daniel Ellsberg and Dolores Huerta here in Sebastopol a week ago. And I think probably most people here are old enough to know who Daniel Ellsberg was, although I was, when I was flying to LA, the kid next to me didn't know who he was.
You could have told him. He couldn't jump out.
Just in case, who doesn't know, he's the guy that did the Pentagon Papers. And Dolores Huerta was the co-founder of United Farm Workers. So, I think those are our community values as well. That's not to take away from people who are veterans and who fought in the Vietnam War or various other wars. It is to proactively acknowledge people that try to help us get to the point of not having a war. And that's what we really want to see, including soldiers. And so, we as a city are acknowledging that as a community value.
One of the debates about that wall is whether we would honor dead people or living people. And that was a serious debate at the council level. I'm very grateful that we decided to honor living people because we could look in their eyes, shake their hands, give them a hug, and say, "Thank you for your lifetime of work."
And one final thought on that, and the love of our fellow human beings in this town, the Peace Wall Ceremony, I had the great privilege to speak at that. And I, it, it's nothing that I tout all that often, but I am a veteran, and I am a member of the F W, the Local Gold Ridge Chapter 3919. And there is nothing incongruent between those two, that you can, you can serve your country and you can also love peace.
One question, not for you, but the camera.
Tuwee, Tuwee Walchinsky and Teresa Mungama, I can't quite say her name quite right, she was born in Jerusalem.
Palestine.
Or Palestine.
And Tuwee Walchinsky.
Oh, Tuwee!
Doctor Tuwee. Doctor Tuwee and Teresa.
I have an assortment of questions, and one of them is a rather hot topic. People here really love the garden, and I don't even have a garden plot, but there's a whole sort of social element to it besides the fact that we get vegetables. But our board has talked about turning that into housing and veggies with the bottle. And I talked to a knowledgeable local person who said, "Well, there are density rules that would not allow them to do that." And I realize you may not be able to speak to that directly. And after listening to everything you said about density, it's hard to argue against it. So, that was my first thought. My second thought is, I used to live in a house that was turned into a duplex, and it had lace curtains and hardwood floors, and it was the nicest place I ever lived. So, in others, that can really be a positive thing. And also, I think about Sebastopol values, and I think about matured, evolved hippie values. For those of us who were hippies, I don't see any discontinuity between who we were then and who we are now. And so, peace and love are really quite lovely and not worth arguing about. But I would like to go back to the question about density and the gardens.
I too have heard those rumors of additional density here at V H O. And whenever I hear that, I think back to the large disappointment of the elimination of our redevelopment agency, which was eliminated by the governor and the funds that were available for us to use locally, local funds used locally for our concept.
Yeah.
And there was a project, I'm sure many folks in the room are familiar with it, that was proposed at the property next door at St. Stephen's Church, which was going to be, I think, around eighty dwelling units in graduated care levels. It was a really, really thoughtful project at the very preliminary discussions that we had about it. It was very well designed, it was very well thought out. And the city, in its capacity as the redevelopment agency, had indicated a tremendous generosity towards providing some funding to help that project over the finish line. And then, that money was taken from us locally, and it's now in the state reserves. Granted, we need reserves at the state level, so I can't speak too badly about that, but it's very disappointing to have experienced that here locally. And so, I have heard the rumors of sentences, paragraphs in the approval forums for this project being constructed as far as maximum densities and all that. I have not yet looked at them comprehensively and to find out what the actual law, you know, what the contract states on that. I do wonder about the garden, I know that it's a tremendous facility out there. On my dog walks, I walk directly adjacent to it, I don't take it through. So, but I always enjoy it when I come across folks out there gardening, it's such a nice community benefit here. Frankly, I think it would be fantastic if garden boxes were built everywhere so that people who maybe had mobility issues, who couldn't go out there and garden, perhaps they could have a garden box at their front door.
Yeah.
To me, seems like a really simple thing that could be worked on, you know, it's some materials and some carpentry, it's not, you know, it's not rocket science or brain surgery, but maybe it is. So, from a bureaucratic standpoint of the management. But the food forest in front of City Hall is a great example of how food and gardens, you don't, you don't need to have just one amount of plants, a nice mix is a great way to go.
I'm very proud of that project in the library in City Hall, isn't it? Nice at the Green Mungon, and we have a historical component honoring Luther Burbank right there in front of the library wall. And there's fruit on one of his trees that you could go by and pick.
Of course.
So, about the potential project up on the garden side, that's what we're talking about, I think it deserves and needs some research. This property is zoned, planned community. So, with that approval, it had, I believe, some density ascribed to it that's different from our other zones, which are very specific, you know, one house, one to five, et cetera. Plant community is a zoning designation that's intended to allow more brave use of the land. And you can see here, we've got the housing and less emphasis on the cars, I mean, we've got a lot of people living on this hilltop. So, I think you'll, okay, so I'm going to go back to the maturity of hippie values, right? What are you, you're people who want to find out what's going on, do your research, have your meetings, and talk to your board, and make sure your board knows what you want to have here on your property where you live. You may have a number of creative solutions, like Patrick has suggested, the individual garden beds, who needs lawn, who needs ivy, you know, if we can do something else, and experience the outdoors in that way. And for a less mobile person, maybe there's a lot more choices. So, I'm going to encourage you to get together and have your own conversation, I imagine city staff can probably help with research down to those original documents.
I'd just like to say something about that too, that's part of our role as a city council and the role of our planning commission to hear the public about, and to be a resource when there is an application in for more building on this property. You know, we do deal with this with developers all the time, developers come to us and they have a building that looks like, you know, a square box. And we say, "Well, we don't really like the square box so much, it would be a lot better if it were a multi-tiered box, and if there were some nice planting in front of it, and if there were a garden, and if there were this." So, you all can also be advocates in this process for keeping your garden and having the kinds of facilities that I think are really obvious that you need in a facility like this. You're not just people being housed somewhere, you're a community. And part of that community is having your garden and facilities and the kind of facilities that bring people together.
And it's Luther's land.
And it's Luther's land.
Lawn, do you know what?
Well, I can't speak to exactly knowing about the density rules on Sebastopol, but I will definitely look into it.
Thank you. Question over here.
Since the question of fires came up, I, if I'm not mistaken, Sebastopol is just as vulnerable as other cities that are burned. Melton, Lower Lake, Parks of Santa Rosa, those are all towns burned. Nice leafy towns, look around and see lots of leaves here. So, I, for the first time now, I'm living here 35 years, I actually started thinking about, my house could burn down, look where I'm sitting, there's all kinds of driveways around. So, anyway, the question is, and this is especially for you, what plans do the city have in case of catastrophic fire, other than, of course, trying to put it out? Talking about pre-remedy plans for that.
Can I, can I take that one first? So, one of the things that we put into the budget this year, which I pat myself on the back, champion, was some money in our budget to reactivate our Know Your Neighborhood program and to fund somebody who would be a public outreach coordinator to help us have better emergency preparedness. So, we actually have two subcommittees on the city council right now, one of which is in charge of updating our emergency response plan because we actually do have a formal plan. But then, the other committee is working with our fire department to work on more public outreach and doing more public engagement and awareness of what can be done in emergencies. So, we actually have, the fiscal year just began on July 1st, and we have hired somebody to be a coordinator, a public outreach coordinator, to work on reactivating our Map Your Neighborhood program. And Map Your Neighborhood is about every block or so, everybody knowing their neighbor, knowing what your resources are in an emergency, knowing what you should do in an emergency, knowing how to take care of each other, and knowing little things like how to turn off, you know, some elderly people can't turn off their gas, for example. So, there's actually a training video for this, there's a number of educational materials, and we're just working on getting that engaged and back underway. We had done that program quite a number of years ago, we need to really get it more engaged and get our more recent residents and the public back engaged with Know Your Neighbor.
So, firestorm last year, I was out there, and there was nothing we could do, not if there wasn't enough firefighters, there wasn't enough water, there was no way of stopping it, people just had to run. And definitely, West County, there is a lot of twigs, dry brush, dry timber, dying trees. And I think that the city should look into creating a vegetation cleanup program. So that, you know, if there are, you know, identify dying trees and get them out of here. But even, even that isn't enough, because I saw perfectly good green trees just going up in flames because the fire was so hot, it just dried the trees out instantly and they caught on fire. So, I mean, we can prepare, we can get ready, it may never come, it may come, we just need to be ready.
So, a lot of being ready means being individually ready. I think the concept needs to come, you know, from the fire department in the city right down to the neighborhoods, which is wonderful, if people are willing to connect on that level. Importantly, it needs to get right to the individual in their housing unit. So, I, I think for this group particularly, we need to make sure that you have an evacuation plan. I have been exchanging emails with Caverly about this. It's really important that folks know what to do when they're threatened so that we have a clear process, a clear plan, and clear action so that when we run, which we need my duty to do, we know what we've got with us and how to get out the door, importantly, where to go. And I'm thinking of that because there's this big property across the street with the green fence that just has a for sale sign on it, and I'm thinking, what if there are a lot of people over there? And when you go down Bodega, you have two different condominium developments, one has 26 units on it, the other one has 32. So, we have groups of people on a major thoroughfare, and everyone's going to need to get out if we have this major fire event or an earthquake event. So, having that clarity of what to do, I think, is going to be what saves us from our individual life to our neighborhood because our fire department and our police department might not be there to help, what they suggest is, each of us needs to be responsible for ourselves up to seven to 10 days, which is quite a long time when you think of that, if you're worrying about water, and you're worrying about food, you're worrying about sanitation, and you may be not where you live, but somewhere else. All of the evacuees who came here lived in our community center, lived at the gym at Annley High School. So, I think we want to spend some time in the next year or two making sure our emergency response is organized, our outreach person is busy, and each of our individual communities are also engaged in making their plans. and each of our individual communities are also engaged in making their plans for safety.
The fire department here in town for years has run a weed abatement program that we, as the council, received the report on with the list of properties with the SCOTF laws on it.
By name.
By name, property. And so that's been a really tremendously popular, successful program that our fire chief administers. The property owners receive very kind, polite letters heading, you notice your property has some weeds you need to take care of. And I can't remember any property owner over the last several years who has not undertaken that work voluntarily, done the work. The city did not need to mobilize forces to go out there and abate the weeds. That's the most basic of things that we should all do, is take care of our own. And so that's been a real, a real positive, useful program. And we do have a fair number of large properties in town. We do have a lot of dry weeds on them and that's historically been a problem for fires. The idea of being prepared for other natural disasters, we're probably more likely here to suffer from an earthquake and not a fire. So being responsible for ourselves and our neighbors is what we need to all do. Again, to harken back to my day job, I try to convince folks when they're doing remodels or new construction to have a closet on the exterior of their homes that is sized with shelves in it, four plastic bins where, hey, you can keep your earthquake supplies, your tent, your sleeping bag, your container full of backpacking food and water and a change of clothes. And hopefully you never need to use it, but boy, are you gonna be happy that it's there when you do need it. And it's surprising how difficult it is to convince people to devote eight square feet to an earthquake supply closet with an exterior door. So there is resistance to it because we think it will never happen. There are an awful lot of people in Santa Rosa who think that the firestorm was never gonna happen. Who would've thought that a fire was gonna jump six lanes of freeway? It's unbelievable. The fire department that we have here, I was just leafing through the report that we get, and it is, the, let's see, the standard is that we'll have a maximum response time of nine minutes and assemble 15 firefighters to scene a structural fire to 90% of the time. That's the kind of wonky numbers that it gets into. But the average response time is slightly over six minutes for 80% of calls and within seven minutes for 100% of calls. So our volunteer firefighters are doing the level of professionalism that many communities don't see from full-time paid, what they call professional firefighters. I beg to differ, that definition of what we have here. We have volunteers who are the utmost professional in their jobs. And it's just remarkable when I go to city, legal city conferences or other things where fire services are discussed. And we are a really unusual community that we still have a volunteer firehouse. And the 30 odd volunteer firefighters that we have here in town who give up Christmas and Thanksgiving and every Thursday night for training, it's a pretty remarkable esprit de corps that that group of individuals has. And I couldn't be more proud of them. I think that the work they do is just tremendous. The answer to the question about, the original question about how do we prepare? The Map Your Neighborhood is a great way to go. Meeting your neighbors, knowing who's your go-to person. I was asked, are you the person who would come up and inspect a building up here at Burbank? Because of my job and my knowledge? And the likelihood is, well, yes, because I, carrying that state license to do the work that I do empowers me to be able to, in an emergency, be tapped on the shoulder by the building official and say, go inspect buildings, make sure they're safe for our residents. And I'm a five-minute walk away from here. So you can guarantee that I would be up here looking at buildings, making sure that they're safe or not safe. And that's the way this community works, is that we all pitch in when those kinds of things happen. So, Michael?
I just have a question when you were talking about evacuation. I live on Bodega and every afternoon it's a parking lot. I mean, if you had a real urgency and you had to get people out of town, it takes in the morning two, three lights to get from Main Street past CBS. I mean, the lights, they don't sync time very well. And if you had to get people going one way or another, do you have any other plans for developing routes or some other avenues that people could use instead of everybody just thinking Bodega's the way to go?
We're stuck with the roads, we're stuck. And they're, the, it's not the silver lining, but I have a connection to the county Emergency Services Department. And somebody who is now retired from that department, her husband was the, one of the three or four main people down in Marin County in their equivalent department. And that, when an earthquake occurs in Marin County, they are horrified at what that evacuation is going to look like because anybody who's ever driven around on the back roads of Marin County, we think we have narrow roads, there's nothing compared to what they have down there. So they're gonna have a significant problem. So in comparison, you know, that's kind of how we have to look at it. Is that, yes, we do have a three or four cycle of the light to wait to get to a thoroughfare. How much worse would it be during a major evacuation? Probably significantly. But honestly, we're not going to knock down buildings, we're not going to pave over our sidewalks. And to design the capacity of the roadways for a mass evacuation is, we would be like we're living in Los Angeles, right? You know, it's just, it's something that is a significant concern for the emergency services departments, the fire, the police, and the city council and all of the senior management. But the reality is that we are stuck with what we're stuck with. And in a major evacuation, we just would hope that people can be kind to each other and do what they need to do.
We don't have space for new roads within our boundaries. There's just not the land to build a new road. There's been talk of an east-west bypass, but that would be out in the county somewhere.
That would only get to...
And we would only get to that. So I think we may have an access for help through our fifth district supervisor. A lot of our traffic is not our local traffic, but the people who are passing through on their way to shop elsewhere, work elsewhere, and then they are coming out through town on their way home. And so I think with our supervisor and the more positive relationship the three of us have created with her in her two years in office, almost two years in office, we can have some constructive conversations. One might be to direct Highway 116 traffic up Highway 101 to River Road rather than have it come through town. But of course, we have to look at the consequences of that, wouldn't that hurt our business community? We also can work with her, I'm hoping if we get the grant for improvements on Regal Road and to also fund the planned improvements for Bodega Avenue so that we have some better traveling roads that are safer for our drivers, safer for our cyclists and for our pedestrians. And hopefully, in some small way, we can upgrade for safety. But I don't see a great way to upgrade for capacity until the county takes the county traffic on the county roads and off our little streets in our small town.
So like what Sarah said about the bypass in town, let's say it's 5 o'clock, it's complete mayhem downtown, we all know that. And that's what the car is coming through town. But if we had a bypass in town, it would lessen the amount of people in town at, let's say, 5 o'clock. And I know that there's a big push to shelter in place during an earthquake, but in a fire, there's nowhere you can run. So I think that if, there needs to be some in-depth look into an evacuation, city evacuation plan. Hopefully, you never have to act on it, but if there is, how are we gonna do it? Is everyone just gonna follow to Santa Rosa, out to Bodega? Where are we gonna go? And if we make that known to people of, hey, you can go south of town, east of town, west, this is the way to do it. And I know that, yes, there are traffic lights, but in total chaos, I believe that people are not gonna follow traffic laws. They're not, there's gonna be mass looting in, say, earthquake situation. So we can talk about these situations all we want. When you can, you know, say, well, what if this happens? What if that happens? But we need to rely on not only ourselves, but also on our neighborhoods.
And that's where Map Your Neighborhood comes in. And so Map Your Neighborhood isn't just about mapping your neighborhood. It's about providing education to small neighborhood groups to plan for emergencies and to plan what to do and where to go and who to meet when an emergency occurs. So that's kind of part of the Map Your Neighborhood program. But now that this, we're talking about this, I'm gonna check up on whether we have some emergency route maps. And maybe we can start distributing those with the Map Your Neighborhood program so every little neighborhood can talk about how they can best exit their neighborhood and where they're going to go. But we'll need some maps so we can work on this as a community as part of that process.
Thank you. We have a question here from Dionne.
So 42 years in county, all my relatives have moved away from the place they were born because they can't afford to be there. I wouldn't be here except for this place, which I can afford. My questions have kind of changed as I listen to you. Draw a picture of Sebastopol that I actually don't know. For the last year, in order to get downtown, I cross this highway and go over here, I go over there, I make a left turn, I make a right turn, I make a right turn. And that's how I get to Community Market because I cannot take Bodega Avenue. It's, okay.
Next question.
Question? Well, as I said, it's changed since you've been here. I'm a member of Nextdoor and there must be 200 posts on there right now of rather inflamed citizens who are questioning the bike paths. So, okay, why don't you all get on Nextdoor and listen to people who have a somewhat different experience of Sebastopol? There's a great deal here to be adored and loved and protected, but there's also an existential dilemma. Hey, we could solve a lot of problems here with traffic. If people would just slow down. How can we tame the road rage that we see every day in Sebastopol? Okay, that's my question.
Well, nobody's jumping at that one. So actually, I am, I do get on Nextdoor on occasion. I do listen to what people say. And then, and some of, I have to say, over this particular issue, things have gotten a little, like, beyond the pale. Like when somebody starts equating the city council's commitment to bike lanes with being the same as the Trump administration, I start to get a little... I got kind of an email about that earlier today. That was interesting. But I do recognize that things are changing. I've lived in Sonoma County since 1971. I've lived in Sebastopol for almost 30 years and in Sebastopol prior to that, you know, on and off. I know they're changing and I, and, you know, it's, what I said earlier is it's complicated. I don't think, there isn't a simple answer. These are issues that are global. You know, I'm, like, I read The Guardian every day, The Manchester Guardian, which is a UK newspaper. And they're talking about the same kind of issues happening in London and they're happening in New York and they're happening in Los Angeles and they're happening in Boston and we could go on and on. It's the issues of gentrification, income disparity. These have their roots in really global economics, et cetera. And so I understand people's frustration. I understand why they would feel angry. And they don't know me, they don't know everybody on our council. So their response may be, okay, you know, the traffic's bad and you haven't done anything about it. And I can, all I can say is we have tried to do the best we can and we will continue to do so. Part of, like, okay, traffic issues, you know, a lot of that is caused by how many homes that, and small parcels that have been made in West County that are outside our jurisdiction. We have, I think it's the highest number of roads for our square acreage of any county in the state. And that's because we have so many little parcels and that. And so there's all these little houses and all those little houses are taking their cars and their cars are coming here and we're at the intersection of two state highways. And yes, we can talk about a bypass, but we're, even if we want a bypass, you look at the Caltrans plan and their plan, their 20-year plan has spent like a million dollars on examining that. And in the state of California universe, that means they really aren't looking at it. So I think what we have to do is understand that the people that are on the council are all trying to do the best that they can within the context that we have right now. And we're living in a world where there's, the state's taken away our funding for affordable housing. It's, that situation is even worse on a federal level. We're dealing with, you know, laws coming out of Washington that I think almost everyone in this room, their hair stands on end when they hear about it. And so what we're trying to do is the best that we possibly can with what we've been dealt. And I do try to listen to people, I try to sympathize, and I try to understand, hear what they're saying. And then I try to do the best, make the best decisions I can given what our, what the parameters are. And some of these issues, they have to do with money. We're a teeny tiny city, you know, about eight and a half million dollars a year. I mean, just doing like a quarter of a mile of road costs more than that. Trying to do, you know, we've had this issue of bike lanes. We had someone who very, very sincerely wanted us to have a bike bypass, which sounds like a great idea. I love that idea. I mean, I worked for trails and bike trails, you know, professionally for 10 years and for hiking trails. But the thing is, with the cost of the land, we can't just go and take people's land away now. That's not something that is a legal pathway for us. So for us to make a pathway that bypasses just for bikes and around Sebastopol would be 20, 30... would be twenty, thirty or more million dollars. And we don't have access to that money. We certainly don't have it as a city. But the a, access to that kind of funding is not available on a state or federal basis either. We're kind of low on the priority list. We're a little tiny town of seventy-five hundred people. So, yes, I, I hear people's frustration. I get it. And I, and there are certainly days when, I mean, I still work. I understand how hard it is, particularly for people that are going, oh, no, 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 I'm getting late for work. And they're stuck in, you know, in traffic. I get it. And I can assure you that I don't take that lightly, lightly. I don't think anybody here takes that lightly. And we're working to do the most that we can with the resources that we have.
So I wanna speak to Dionne's question, which was, how do we get people to slow down? And how do we control ra, road rage? Because I don't think it's about issues really bigger than little old Sebastopol. The report I hear on the street when I go door to door, number one complaint, speeding in residential neighborhoods. Number two complaint is the parking conflict that I mentioned earlier in residential neighborhoods. So I think each of us as a driver wants the cars in our neighborhood to go slowly, and then somehow we're speeding through somebody else's neighborhood to get children to school or get to work or to get to the grocery store and bring dinner home, whatever that might be. So I've asked people, I go, I don't, you know, how do I have a solution to this? What do you recommend? And I get these self-help answers, as I indicated about parking. Well, here's one, and this is fun, from the hippie that I knew point of view. So a group of neighbors said to me, well, what we're thinking of doing is getting our lawn chairs out and taking apart the sidewalk and sitting there with a sign that says, "We're taking your picture and sending your information to the police department because we want you to slow down." I thought, a lovely fun project for people to socialize and have eyes on the street and alert everybody who went through, this is our stop sign, this is our neighborhood. We want you to stop. We don't want that Hollywood, California roll-through, and we want you to go slowly. You see those signs up there, "Drive like your pets live here, drive like your kids live here"? That's another idea for self-help. I heard this one through an email today. A gentleman said, well, we do have Patrick Amios' trailer that's the Slow Down Kitty with a paw that says, "Slow down." How about we commission him as a city to make several of those and deploy them all around town at the same time so that when people drive into town, they go, okay, these people don't want us to speed. There's a reminder, there's a reminder, there's another one. We did put up the signs at the entrances to town that say something like, "You're entering downtown. Slow down, you're entering downtown." And I think, hopefully, that's helped. Maybe they're not big enough. We need to get the message to ourselves. We can leave five minutes earlier, we can drive five miles an hour under this speed limit. We can affirmatively create the culture of driving that we want here, and it's universally, slow down. Slow down on my street, which has to be your street as well. So I'd like to work on that in the next four years, and I would appreciate more creative solutions. I'm almost to the point where I, I'm thinking we need an enforcement officer in the police department who's just out and about town, monitoring stop signs for those roll-throughs, monitoring speeding. And that's complicated, and I'm not sure that the police chief would want to dedicate somebody that way. But I think that's worth that discussion on the council level.
Okay, well, I know I've heard the discussion of possibly putting in speed bumps around town. Yes, a lot of people don't like them. Yes, they slow down traffic. So, you know, there's, I would say that that would be something to ask neighborhoods to come together and say, we would like, you know, speed bumps to be placed on our street and have the majority of people on that street sign a petition that says they're in agreeance with it or they do not like it. Also, roundabouts is a big, you know, keeps traffic moving and also slows it down. I spent three months in Australia, and for most of the time I drove around, and they are big on roundabouts. Because it slows traffic down, but it also keeps it moving. And, yes, we are kinda set up for failure with the traffic issue because we are dealt a bad hand of cards. But I think that if we, we, the city, talk to the county and say, we would like the possibility of more funding. I know the funding is hard to come across, but find a way for more funding, you know, whether it be a bond or another measure on a county level that's builds, helps build alternate routes around Sebastopol so people aren't funneled through downtown. And also, eventually, restoring downtown to two-way traffic. I think that that would be another way of helping reduce speeding because, you know, everyone's not funneled in one direction. It's, it slows people down. And also getting the traffic lights in town. Work with the state, with Caltrans, to get the lights in downtown timed a lot better. So let's say you're going east on Bodega. That, you're not stopped in the intersection at the main intersection so that you just go through the downtown corridor right there a lot smoother than every minute the light changes from red to green. It's green in one direction for at least two minutes, if not longer.
The original question about change is, as was stated, it's an existential question. It's, change is going to occur. And the way that my view on it is that it's important for us to be in charge of the change rather than letting the change happen from external forces. It's part of our community DNA. We, we really are very good at planning, at visioning, at figuring out what we want our community to be. And that's all related to change. Change is going to happen. It's important for us to be in charge of it. So that's the way that personally I look at change. It's going to happen regardless of whether I want it to or not. So let's try to make it something that I can live with. And I think that that's a, it's been a useful perspective for me throughout my tenure on the council, certainly, but probably longer in life than I realized. We talk a lot about, about our green, sustainable values. We talk about our, our community desire for affordable housing, or I should say, housing that is affordable. Affordable housing is a kind of a legal definition of things. We want housing that is affordable. We want housing that's affordable for people of all means. If somebody is earning well into six figures a year, well, they can afford a larger, more expensive house. That is housing that is affordable for that individual. We have people who are, many people who are not earning that kind of money. We need housing that is affordable for those people. That is a change. That is a community value that's important to us, but that also brings with it change. And if, if we want housing that folks can afford to live in, then we need to have our zoning ordinance and our general plan and all the things that, that the nuts and bolts of how housing is developed allow for greater densities because higher densities are more affordable to construct and therefore more affordable to live in. We need to walk the walk. We shouldn't just talk about it. We need to actually take action. And I see this with the, the current upheaval over the bike lanes. We've had this, we've had our Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan in place for almost a decade. And the, the date on it, on the, on the revision, what, is 2011. So it's been in the works for a long time. It's been talked about in public for a very long time. It's been presented at meetings. It's been part of the general plan process. The council has talked about it. We used to have a Complete Streets Committee that talked about it. The nuts and bolts of the implementation of that, I get that that is, now that it's actually occurring, it's changed. It's difficult for people to accommodate. And I will also, I, I can't take ownership over it because it's Caltrans ownership over the current striping project and the significant difficulties that our city staff has had in dealing with Caltrans subcontractors. They're the ones that hired multiple striping contractors to go out there and put down the bike lanes and then also the traffic lanes. For some reason, the same contractor can't do both white and green. I don't understand.
Or two contractors at one time.
Or two contractors and, and roll through certain parts of the community and do, rather than, oh, a little bit up here and a little bit over there and some over here. And we've got lane markings that are very confusing. And, well, the lane just disappeared. I didn't know where to drive. I, I, I get that. That's a difficult, confusing situation. And I, I, I ask for the community's patience with this. The city staff has done nothing but deal with this issue this entire week. Believe me, they have other things that they probably should be doing, but this is the thing that has risen to the top. And the city staff is working very diligently on some educational pieces that Caltrans is unable to provide for us. The suggestion that may have originated from an email box that I am responsible for to the city staff, hey, how about we actually go rent some signs? And, and the, the changeable message signs that say, change conditions ahead. How about something as simple as where the lane disappears? We go out there and put a line, a line of cones down so that people understand, okay, this is different. The lane disappears or something happens. I need to make sure that I'm driving safely. We all need to take responsibility right now in an extraordinary way. And drive where it's safe. Don't necessarily worry about the lane markings that are very confusing and some are temporary and some are permanent. Drive where it's safe, be considerate of others, and we'll get through this. And what will we, what we will end up with is a calmer traffic situation in town. It is proven time and time again that road diets, which is the wonky industry term for removing traffic lanes, which is a difficult concept for a lot of people to understand, that the removal of traffic lanes actually leads to freer flowing traffic and significantly reduced incidence of road rage because people just have to get in line and take their turn. How many times have we all driven down Petaluma Avenue and someone comes whizzing past you because they've been on your tail since, you know, halfway from Kattati? And this is a, a residential neighborhood where a large medical facility and, and doctor's offices, and a lot of people live down there, and that's where Petaluma Avenue Homes is. This is in town. We don't need people with road rage whipping past you at forty or fifty miles an hour in our residential zone. The traffic calming that comes from that road diet will help that situation immensely. We just need to get through the construction of it because it's difficult for everybody. And I, I.
Is there a timeline?
What we've, we've been told a couple of weeks is really up in the air. We have no idea what the actual timeline is going to be. So.
I think Henry's, well, yeah, I think Henry's getting more accurate in his timeline predictions because remember a couple of weeks ago, he said the hog was gonna go in and the power is gonna be up. We're watching October first, and there'll be a week to troubleshoot it and hopefully it will be operational very early in October. He's also predicting that this situation with Caltrans will resolve with this driving in October. And I wanna say kudos to Henry because he's been so on Caltrans and perhaps other staff members as well. Let's acknowledge them. And overnight, they did this driving from McKinley South to Palm, you know, the end of the island where the one, the two ways resume. So they were actually able to get the car lanes marked just last night so that at least that part right now is a lot clearer and people aren't driving like this like we were yesterday. Where are cars supposed to be? So hopefully, Caltrans is gonna do their rest, you know, from our main intersection north of Kiltberg. And as Namiar said, hopefully we'll have a rational roadway that makes sense to us and rational drivers who are willing to share the road. Also, I wanna mention, there is money from the CBS lawsuit, the settlement money, the synchronization study. So we do have that funding. We haven't been able to do it yet. And I'm not sure exactly why I wanna blame it on Caltrans.
I think it might have to do with the paving project. So you see how these things lead one idea into the next? It's a community conversation rather than the answer to a question. I see Michael over there getting ready to cut me off. So another highly successful, highly visible area that is your direct neighborhood right down the road at Rangel. The improvements that the city facilitated to that roadway, I, I've received probably proud of a dozen thank you notice, letters, emails, communications from folks that the improvements down there have significantly improved that condition. It's slow traffic. It's, it's a road diet. We removed the width of the road, made it so people felt like this is how fast I need to drive through here rather than this is a freeway and for some reason the speed limit's only forty miles an hour. So it's, 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 it's an improvement by design and it's an improvement with the, with those existing conditions. Over here, we have a question.
I lived in Arcadia for six years, and they have roundabouts. They have traffic calming circuits. And it really works. It really does, and it's not that big a difficulty. But I know there might be expense involved in it. Also, I just wondered, do you guys have what amounts to a mission statement for Sebastopol? In other words, something that you can, in other words, this is who we are. This is what matters to us. We are more of this and less of that. That you can hold decisions up against them and see whether they fit in with that.
First of all, the roundabouts, there's, because of the physical constraints of the city, there's really only a couple of places in town that, that have enough space to even install a roundabout. I too think they're wonderful. They're, they're a great way, as Lon said, traffic keeps moving. People get where they need to go, point in the right direction. And it's not this stop-start, stop-start thing, which is an environmental issue, frankly. Cars idling in traffic is, is a big environmental issue. And a, a, a mission statement. I'm actually not aware that the city has a mission statement. I think it goes back to the question from almost two hours ago now about, about what are our community values? And I think that, that folks who are in positions of responsibility, appointees to our city boards, commit the Planning Commission, the Design Review Board, the Tree Board, the elected, the city council, the, the senior staff of, of our city. I think we all have our own definition of what those values are and what our, what our mission statement personally is. And frankly, I think it would be, it, it would be a, a process, I think, fraught with difficulties because everybody would want to get their own little thing in it, which I think we would probably end up with one of the longest mission statements in the world, which maybe does not a bad thing, you know? And, 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 and. So the, I, I, I think it's an interesting thing to think about. And maybe it would make sense for everybody to write their own personal mission statement for Sebastopol and have that as sort of a community conversation that we all might have. That's a, that's a great idea. Yeah.
That's a fun idea. We just crowdsourced another idea here. So when the question was asked, Mary started nodding her head back there. Yes, there must be a mission statement. For the council members, we do have goals that we set and we review on a yearly basis each January. And that's what we hold our, our projects, our work effort, our subcommittee work up to. Have we declared in January that this is a priority for this year? It also arises, those goals also arise out of our budget. So as we may want to do something, if there isn't budget and money, we have to go to the other thing we said before. We made that one up. This is what we want to do. So our work is getting more and more focused. And I wanna thank our former mayor, Michael Kaiser, for that. He was the fellow who really got us on track with detailed goals and objectives. And the council operates by those. So we hold our decisions up to those goals and objectives as well as to the general plan. And hopefully, we're staying on course with it.
Folks, we have time for a couple more quick questions and answers. And, sorry, over here, the four of us, quick.
I want one of those kitties on Fergrest Avenue permanently. I want one of the Slow Down Kitties on Fergrest Avenue permanently because that's such a thorough.
No, my question is back to the emergency. What is Sebastopol? I know there's talk about cameras for fires being put around the county. I know that there's talk about notifying the residents. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on out there. And, I mean, I know I have Nexol, but, you know, I turn my... you know, I turn my phone off at night. And, I mean, what is Sebastopol? What is the goal as far as communication with the residents? What's kind of been the works there?
Okay. The county is busily working on revisions to their emergency operations. In fact, that department, as we know it, is essentially being disbanded. And so there were four main divisions within the Department of Emergency Services. A couple of them are going to the permit and resource management department, and this is all terribly wonky and I apologize. One of them is going to the sheriff's and then the fourth is becoming its own standalone department. And the reports in the Press Democrat, just this week at the supervisor's meeting, they were talking about the installation of sirens, the fire cameras, that I believe is PG&E infrastructure. Those are being installed. That's something that PG&E is, it's on their nickel. They're doing that work. I'm not aware of any of those specifically in and around Sebastopol. So that's a question I just jotted down to ask our fifth district supervisor about to find out if Sebastopol is in those conversations. I don't know. I hear the sirens. I believe it's the great fire department. I hear it at my house, you know, five minutes walk away from here. So I know that sirens are, you can hear sirens.
Sirens you can hear.
Sirens you can hear. But the problem with sirens is what does the siren mean? So, you know, is it Morse code? And we all have a card that we pull out of our pocket. Okay, that was three short and one long. What does that mean? You know, so there's that difficulty, but at least it's an awareness thing that can happen. Within the city communication you're asking about, we have our emergency management plan, which Yuna mentioned a long time ago. And I'm on that subcommittee to take a look at that and revise it as necessary. Our fire chief is also, he's part of that subcommittee. And the plan that we have is woefully out of date. There is a lot of good stuff in there. We could get through with it, but I think it is a desperate need of update. And in our small city, I think that we could actually notify a significant number of our residents using the fire trucks and the police cars and go to, basically drive up and down the streets and alert people that way. We're not at a size where that, it would be difficult and it would be an undertaking, but it would also be in the realm of possibility. So I think that that's one way that we could do it. In a community such as this, this would be a really easy place to get the word out because everybody's front doors are so close. You know, simply knock, knock, hey. Knock, 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 hey. And I think that that would be largely successful.
So one of the big issues during the firestorm was a huge number of people no longer have landlines. And so the emergency notification system was going out to phones that weren't working anymore because we lost over a hundred cell towers. So that has been a big discussion in the Office of Emergency Services. And so the notification system and the software that does that is something that I know the county has been looking at and working on. There are a lot of people that were very unhappy with, you know, how that worked. And so the county is working on that. And the other thing, I totally agree with what Patrick said about, you know, let's go over to your door because, and I talked to people that lived on First Creek Road, and they were totally asleep. And the way that they got out was somebody pounding on their door. So I think we need to implement something like that in our town. We need to work with the county to get this updated phone system where we somehow deal with the issue of cell phones not working in emergencies. And most importantly, we need to deal with things on a regional basis because, you know, I have a friend who lives one house outside of town and out on road, off of Radel. And every time she calls the sheriff, there's this big kerfluffle of, no, no, you're in town. No, no, you're out of town. And it doesn't, you know, having a bureaucratic argument in an emergency is not a good idea. So I think that kind of grassroots, knock on the door kind of thing is a really good idea.
Yes, that goes back to map your neighborhood. And, you know, just go and, even if you don't know your neighbor and it's an emergency, yeah, go and knock on their door. Even if they're not there or you know that they already know, still tell them because they may forget or, you know, get tunnel vision. And that happens a lot. I know every Wednesday at around noon, my fire department pager goes off and it's the countywide emergency test for the fire departments. So every fire department in the county, some police departments, ambulance services, they all get the same notification at the same time. So then if, in the event of a major disaster, everyone is notified, every department is notified at the same time. So then we all can roll out as one pack.
I think we're getting an idea here for another community meeting for the future council and future mayor. And that is for all of us as a community to gather and find out what is the effort at the county, what are the changes that have been made. So then we can see amongst our own selves in our conversation, what do we need to do here? And that would be a great topic. Once we have their decisions or indicators of their decisions and we can get together on it.
And that's coming. We don't know what those things are yet. So, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Thank you for being here today. I'm new to the community here. I think right now, today or tomorrow, six months since I've lived here at Burbank Heights after thirty-five years of Santa Rosa. And I've been adjusting and I really love being a part of this community of Burbank Heights and of course Sebastopol and Florence. I'm a driver, but first and foremost, I'm a walker. And I'm really grateful about what's happening at the corner, you know, for safety for everyone. But as the streets downtown have been restructured with the new green bike lanes and everything, I've had some concerns because in San Francisco where I grew up, my back yard is the Golden Gate Park. And we always loved Sunday because they closed the park to traffic. I love cyclists that follow rules, but, you know, I don't know how many years ago it's been since they put all the bike lanes in the park. And the bicyclists, the cyclists do not really follow considerate, you know. They're just, they're just not conscious. They'll just, you know, they don't stop like the drivers do. I have a concern about, I go to, I love the Sunday morning Sebastopol Park. And I park somewhere around the Whole Foods parking lot. And I'm just always so grateful about the way that the drivers stop, you know, when we want to cross over to the market. I just don't know if the bicyclists, if the cyclists are gonna be doing that. And I'm just wondering how that's gonna be. Or, yeah, but this is what I'm getting to. I've been concerned these last few weeks, okay, about when I see these new green lines and squares and whatever. Nothing prepared me for what happened. I had a personal emergency last Tuesday afternoon. Excuse me for anybody who's heard it here, but Mayor Patrick, I've been wanting to come see you this week. It's been two years now. And I am a fan of yours. I want to speak this out loud, that I had a wonderful day. And coming home from some errands, I stopped at the Whole Foods to get a couple of items. And a couple of store, and a couple of steps, just steps out of the store, I was just struck, I was hit down by a skateboarder. He struck me. He knocked me down. And I'm one that's so cautious, I always look both ways. But I no more thought I was in danger right there. You know, it was right outside the door. Not in the street, not on the sidewalk, but just in front. I'm injured and it was horrifying to me. It's so painful. But he stayed, I tried to leave. And I said, no, you need to stay. And they got the manager from Whole Foods and, but he, the next person to arrive was a wonderful police chief who I have a huge crush on.
We all do.
He's had a good few flowers when I get a little better. And, you know, I told him to come visit him. But he was so kind and stayed with me, let me, you know, hold his hand and hold on to him because I was so, so, so traumatized. I was in shock for hours. But when the police came, that crazy skateboard, he was an adult, wasn't a, you know, wasn't a teenager. He was an adult. He left. And now the store manager got his name, but he had no address, no phone number, no ID. And so the police tried to find the skateboard park, but he was nowhere to be found. And I heard from Officer Shaw a few days ago. He said, well, even if we found him, there's not a thing we could do because we didn't see it. I'm just wondering, what the hell is the ordinance here in Sebastopol about skateboard riders? Because I never encountered this in my thirty-five years in Santa Rosa of, you know, if I go to Montgomery Village, if I go places where I'm shocked, where I feel secure, where I like to go visit all the merchants, and I like our downtown here. But I don't know if I'm gonna be able to go down there anymore because I feel really afraid. And so I'm sorry to be, you know, take so much time, but that's, I'm wondering. And are the skateboarders gonna be able to go in those bike lanes? Because that would be, anyway.
There was a lot in there. And I, the question of a skateboarder and what category that person is, I believe that they are, and this would be a question for the police chief as far as the vehicle, but I believe that if a skateboarder is actively skating, that that sort of is in the same category as a cyclist. And a cyclist is in largely the same category as a motorist. You have to stop at stop signs. You have to yield. You have to indicate what direction you're turning. All those things that we take for granted as motorists and yet a lot of cyclists don't. And I am a cyclist. I ride all over town, regionally for recreation. It's something I've always done. And I probably still have scars and grease under my fingertips from working on them as a child. So the need for cyclists to obey the law, this is, this is, this comes up all the time. I'm a member of Bicycle Coalition in Santa Rosa, the countywide bike coalition. They teach, they have youth classes on teaching this very good etiquette, rules of the road. They also teach it to adults. And those are some really good, well-attended classes. So I know that there are probably a significant number of cyclists who are the good apples. They're doing it the right way. It's a couple of bad apples in the bushel that ruin it for everybody. And when I hear stories like yours, that it's difficult to hear because I don't have a solution. I don't have a reaction other than sympathy for what happened to you. It's a traumatizing thing. And I would hope that nobody ever had to go through it. As far as the city action for those kinds of things go, one of your neighbors who is sitting very near you suffered a collision with a vehicle. And it was, it was really very traumatic for the entire community, not just specific to you. It was incredibly difficult to hear the realities of what that was. The city has taken significant action, and that's the Hawk. And a positive way to stop traffic so people can cross the road out there. And so we need to hear these stories and we need to act on them as rapidly and as proactively as we can. So I would be happy to talk with you at greater length, but I certainly in no way want to monopolize it.
But you are.
It felt like it was addressed to me, but.
It was, I think. I'm very sorry for your injuries and I hope you heal thoroughly, including the emotional response, because that sense of vulnerability, it runs really deep and it's very hard to pull oneself out of. I know. So I suggested to the mayor a couple of days ago that perhaps you should have the Bicycle Coalition professional expert people come on over and do an informational, educational meeting with the community that says, here's what the solid green means, here's what the striping green means, here's what the green with the white stripes means. So all of us can be educated, whether we're the pedestrian on the sidewalk, the person getting out of a car and opening the car door into the car zone, the cyclist and the motorist. Because we need to learn how to do this so that people are not injured and we can travel safely around town. Another request of you, before I forget, or when we're gonna end soon, I'm hoping, I would like all of you to stay in touch with us about the Hawk and how it works for you. And that's important for us to get the feedback. Is that a good system out there? Let us know. It's the new pedestrian activated light going in right at the driveway.
Yeah, well, I don't come over here, but I think they're fabulous. Yeah, no, they're fabulous.
One more question.
Can I just say one more thing about the accident? And I'm thinking that we need to do more outreach to skateboard users. And that perhaps we could put together a flyer that gets distributed at the skateboard park to educate kids about, hey, this is, okay, yeah, it wasn't a kid, it was a, but I bet he was fifty.
No, he was twenty.
Yeah.
And he's an adult.
So, so an adult, but, you know, like, what do we think about people that age now? Like, okay, we're getting old. There are some young people here. But I think we need to get communicating with those people about the responsibilities of being a skater. And so I think we could do some outreach at the skateboard park. And the other thing I'm wondering about is if we could talk with one of our nonprofits such as Chittislow about, and I don't know if you'd be willing to do this, but people that have had close encounters of the skateboard kind. And do a little interview about what that meant to you and video it and put it up on our city Facebook page. And hopefully get youth passing that video around amongst Facebook pages in our community. So people could under, you know, I think it's kind of like a restorative justice thing. Like, I think a lot of times kids just don't get it, the impact that something like this can have on somebody that's not twenty.
Well, I think my voice is loud enough. But while I was laying on the ground injured, I talked to him respectfully. I said, you need to learn from this. I'm an older woman and I'm gonna be injured now for months. And, you know, or some time. I didn't say months, but I said, this is, oh, you have to photograph me. Anyway, you know, he never apologized. He never, there was no remorse. He had an attitude. And then he disappeared before the police were underway. So I, I mean, there, some friends and neighbors here have said they'll go with me to the skateboard park because I do want to educate. And I will go to Annalee or wherever. But people need to know that, you know, it's not fun. And this is my favorite season of the year. And walking is my favorite thing. I really have a hard time, you know, with these injuries. So.
Well, I think we need to, us as a council, we can talk to people that we know that do videoing. I'm seeing somebody that does videoing right now. And see if we can do a little interview and put it up on the city Facebook page and see if we can spread it and like it and pass it on to all of our skating neighbors.
Thank you very much for listening to me. And I really appreciate you being here.
Print your media, too.
Yeah, I was with her not long after that happened. And I heard her crying. And I was heading someplace else and I stopped just to go see what was going on. So it hit her really hard and literally and figuratively. And she's gonna be dealing with it for a while. So I'm just, I'm an echo. Also, I'm just really grateful for the bus and that it's free. How many things, wonderful things in life are free. So thank you very much for that. And I have a question. And this is just something I thought about. When the driver turns left onto the day, it's pretty tricky sometimes. And I thought, well, once they could, once the Hawk is in, the driver could just let a passenger out and hit.
Look at the light working.
Yeah, right, yeah. But is there anything he could have that could carry with it?
All right, it works it. But I do want to give you a quick update about the 24th. We had a meeting with Brian and Jody. I think a lot of you know them because they came out here. And we're considering some changes to the route sometime in November, the electric bus will be here. We've had the loner buses that have been noisy and not what we're necessarily used to, but we're going to get the first electric bus and hopefully it will come out on a new schedule that will allow the bus to be on time. The revised schedule, I think, was overly ambitious. And so the Sonoma Transit has decided to take out that second loop around the Barlow that seems excessive because we, yes, because we figured out another way for them to get the bus in the right direction. They're also figuring out the second loop around Safeway on pit and heating and pit because it's not serving anybody. So hopefully that will cut the time now and bring the bus to a reliable schedule so that people can actually get to the bus stop and it comes about when they're expecting it. There is the computer program, Next Bus, that helps predict that. Also, the bus schedule is being revised so that there's the same service hours Monday through Friday, but because of the changes in route, it will be up at the station, the stop at Mill Station across from the Charter School in the afternoon. That could make the service available to students old enough to ride unescorted coming home. That stop also gives our people access to handys if you can use the crosswalk and then get on the bike trail. And that's a way to come home too, not too late in the day. I also asked them to put a shelter up at that bus stop so that students are corralled, you know, and not on the street where people are going too fast. And so if our other bus riding community wants to be out there, there's a little relief from weather. So I'm looking forward to changes in November and December, hopefully more improvements to the 24th.
Yeah, because I would think of the job, never for them, never to be able to be on time, it'd be demoralizing, never to be able to hit the...
It's been really stressful to them and many of the drivers come out of the route have sacrificed their brakes and their lunchtime. And we saw that, we, the riders, saw that happening and that's why we did another meeting and Jody was already on it and revising the schedule.
Folks, we're way over time. Lights out. And I don't know if we all know about it, but I think there's an election coming up that will be very soon. So if you're not registered, get registered and vote early enough.
And also, I register people at the lunch. I have a bunch of registration courts, so I go to the lunch on Wednesday and if there's anyone who's registered to go, I'd be happy to bring them.
Thank you. Thank you all.